Thank you. I could have been doing some things.
I'm overwhelmed, sorry.
Get to it. They have three extra chairs on that's better.
I think it's pathway and library.
I think people.
You know, I would say really well. I'm working with me. I'm not that. It's very good. I like that.
Oh, no.
All right, that's good.
So.
Now.
Turn this off to.
You said you were gonna call me, so that's all right. I figured you'd be one of these days. I know.
It's kind of a landlocked parcel.
Just one of these days when you're gonna be driving around.
Be reaching out to one of the developers that has a couple of vacant houses.
I figured you just spent the time.
Yeah, so then make sure. Because that's a parcel that I voted not to part for to buy. But now that we've made the decision, we need to get a plan and how to utilize. And the concern was the people on that side of the. That's all I'm talking about playground in there with nature. You know, what do we have to do to go forward? Yeah. One notch. Thank you.
She's not serious.
Yep.
Yeah, something we talk about in other. Because she is not living in. Whether they vote or not. We're going in. What I was saying was just the bird. Too many ones. Oh, I see.
Sound. Yeah.
Struggle to consider. Consider the government. But they do. No, we know we pick coal, we pick oil, we hear the. Railroad industry, and then that went to the automobile industry in the fifties and sixties. And then, you know, so I mean, we're always picking. So we give these tech. It's for a purpose. It's second to develop. But you know, the point is, you guys here, we should be picking.
Getting ready for the holiday season? Yeah. Season whole of.
Definitely. Hey. But if you look at the hardcore of why we. Yeah. Back's been a bigger problem, but I've been able to run. I ran yesterday. First time. I ran again today, five miles. But I can't. Or in your. Can be a couple of weeks. I don't think. Maybe because she said she wasn't getting there. Before all the weeks fall, so. With your husband's. Of course. What you wrote about who said in the bylaws? You missed it. All these guys. I totally missed it. Sorry. Yeah, whatever day. The injections are the dangerous part. I had a friend who. Yep. Yeah. And. Who was it? And he had.
Well, we.
Good.
Fifty-nine, six fifty. We'll look at before.
My computer says seven nineteen P M. Okay.
Seven o'clock. The meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lusbrunz, Cascade Supervisor. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Six later, please call the roll.
Christie York.
Here.
Christie McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lusbrunz.
Here.
Treasure Pierce.
Here.
Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
And six later here.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. One presentation tonight from the Kent District Library will present us with their annual report. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cherie Gilrith Watts, and I am a trustee for Kent District Library. And I have to say that I'm kind of out of sorts a little bit because I'm actually the Wyoming rep. And I'm a little partial to my branch, but this is beautiful as well. But here's a great thing about me. I am a teacher in Granville Public Schools. I teach at the high school. And so I'm able to do the great thing of combining my love, my love of literacy, as well as my love of community service. So serving as a trustee for Kent District Library is something that I totally enjoy. And so it's an honor to be here before you this evening to represent the two things that I love the most. I'd like to start off by thanking you for your support and actually kind of give you just a little bit of what I'm most proud of as a member of Kent District Library. Some of the things that we do is we do a wonderful job serving our community. And I'm not just talking Wyoming, but I'm talking about all the residents and patrons of Kent County. We offer so many different opportunities and involvements and ways for our community to just kind of join with us. And one of the things that I really do love is that, I don't know if you know that, but membership has its privileges. And if you are a patron, a card-carrying member of Kent District Library, it allows you to get discounted tickets for the Griffins Hockey Games. You might also be aware that even within my particular district, we have a wonderful partnership with some of the schools in Kelloggsville. And Kent District Library offers an internship, a paid internship, for students to get involved with the library system. It's paid, and that way it assures that they are able to kind of maybe transition into a potential job with the library. And we are very proud of that at Kent District Library. We have books for newborns, where we have welcome gifts for newborns. And that's, you know, that are due in October, this month, actually. And I can honestly say that we really serve Kent County the best. I'd like to take an opportunity again to thank you and also introduce Randy Goble, who is the Director of Engagement. And after Randy will be Lulu Brown, which is your regional manager here at Kent District Library. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Randy Goble, Director of Engagement with K D L. I've had the pleasure of working at K D L for five years now and been a resident of Cascade for about twenty-two years. My kids have gone through the schools here. And one of the happiest days of my kids' lives was when they got their library card here at this branch twenty-two years ago. So that was really monumental for me and my family. When I do these presentations, you know, of course, you have a lot of data that's been shared with you about K D L from the end of last year. And what's happening this year is we're still seeing a continued growth in in-person programs. Digital circulation continues to set record numbers. This branch in particular has an especially innovative team who do just a fantastic job with introducing new programs and finding new reasons to bring people into the library. I also like to put in a plug, a shameless plug for a program or a book when I come to these things too. And we're just wrapping up a new series in partnership with the World Affairs Council called Communities by Design. And the last, the third of the series takes place tomorrow night at the Ada Branch. You're welcome to come to it. We have a guest speaker from the University of Washington. But at the first session I went to, the speaker was an author of a book, The Uncommon Knowledge of Eleanor Ulstrm, who is a Nobel Prize winner in economic sciences. And one of the things that she said was that the core of public policy should be to facilitate the development of institutions that bring out the best in humans. And that really struck a chord because that's what we do together, and we're only able to do it through a partnership with our municipalities like you. So thank you for that. And with that, I'd like to, just if you have any questions with regards to the data that was shared with you, I could try to answer that. And if not, I will introduce Lulu because she has a lot to tell about where the rubber hits the road here at the Cascade Branch.
Are there any questions for Mr. Goble?
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. So my name is Lulu Brown. I've actually worked for the Cascade Branch since May of two thousand twenty-one. I was technically the regional manager too, which is a title that we use within K D L. Basically, I did the schedules. I did a lot of hiring. Now I get to work with you guys a lot more, and I'm really excited about that. Vanessa has moved on to Herick Library to manage their collection, and I'm very fortunate, all the training that she provided me to be able to stand in front of you guys today. So I really just wanted to talk about how great the last year has been. We have so far, year to date, we've checked out more than two hundred and thirty thousand items. We've seen more than a hundred and twenty-two thousand people come into the branch. Almost ten thousand people have actually attended a program within this branch, and we have almost ten thousand active patrons. We're seeing our traffic increase because we've increased our programs. What we wanted to approach this fall season with, we figured that we had great story times, but we didn't have enough for our seniors. So we introduced things like our senior chats, coffee hours. We started bringing in artists on Mondays to perform for our seniors that we were seeing in the branch. And we're getting a lot of really great feedback about all of that. This summer was our first return to a normal summer. We were able to enroll over seventeen hundred people in our summer reading program, and nearly sixteen hundred of them actually completed it. We have recently made a room available in the library to the fire department. And every week I get to hear stories about how much fun they're having by participating in the programs. We're also really excited to have our township supervisors start to offer some open hours in the library's history room soon. Everyone's life has changed during COVID, and my vision as I'm entering this new position is to make sure that we're meeting people where they are. That's what we do at K D L. So whether someone wants to have the library in their pocket through our mobile app, or they want to access our resources online, that's fantastic. But we also realize we're a third place. So people come here when they need a place to host a meeting. They come here when they don't have internet. We have express hotspots available that they can take home. They come here when they don't know what to do because they just lost a family member, and they're not sure to how to just grieve through that process. And our staff is there to say, here's a poem. Here's a book about how to cope with the grief that you're dealing with, or here are some community resources that we can connect. Out of all of the branches, we're consistently ranked really high in our net promoter score. We're always seeing a ninety percent average. Year to date, we have eight total comments where someone has said, we wish you had more books. Or could you be open longer on Sunday? I'm really grateful to be in this position. I'm going to keep my presentation short today because I'm a little bit under the weather. But I am here to answer any questions that you guys have for me.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, yeah, we're really proud of our library, and so thank you for being part of it. One of the things we got concerned about about three years ago when we were thinking about making more investments into the library to improve it and to make it a more, and because it was really designed in the nineties, and we wanted to bring it up to be a more current library for today's times. And I think you guys are doing a great job helping us do that. But the point is, is that, you know, we also want, we talked about the children's garden and expanding it. But we were kind of waiting to see what the impact of Ada Library would be. And I see that our numbers are still really great. I think we're the second largest from a person served in the whole county. And we have probably four times more than Ada. And I think that's, that trend is, I just want to wonder if that's how you feel, that we haven't really been impacted negatively, that our numbers are still increasing.
There is a slight impact. So I have some numbers for you. There are about four hundred and fifty patrons that live in Cascade that regularly go to Ada. That's about four percent of who we totally serve, and that's about fifteen percent of what they serve. What we have started trying to figure out is the why. So we are starting to ask a lot of questions, and we're taking a lot of the feedback that we get through surveys. So one of the things that we're hearing is, first, we're a larger branch, so we're open more hours. So now we're seeing patrons that maybe started going to Ada. They're returning because they're saying they're closed. And that's something that I can't control, but I'm happy that they're coming back to us. There's also some of the feedback that we're getting is they really like the cozy feel of our library. It almost feels like you're entering your living room and you're just coming to connect with a long-lost friend. So we're hoping that the next time that we have a conversation about the refresh or like updating the carpets and the paint, that we can still maintain that cascade feel because it's what people come here for. I think there are a couple of families that have gone over to Ada because they do have more study rooms. We can't compete with that because we just don't, we only have what we have in terms of space. And I don't know if that's something that's up for discussion at some point, but I think there are some people that just need to go to use their podcast room or who'll need the more additional private rooms as well.
So the study rooms is one thing we would like to have. If we expand like with the children's garden and maybe an outdoor gazebo and things that we've been talking about, you think that'll help attract more people as well?
Definitely. So one of the things that we learned this fall, so last year we had about ten thousand people that came to this branch in the month of September. This September, we had fourteen thousand people. It's because we increased our programming. It's because we're investing in our staff with the training. They want to come here. I think we're really trying to make Cascade a destination branch to say, it's great if you want to go to Ada, but you're going to get something unique here at Cascade that you can't get anywhere else. We're going to deliver more programs, better programs. And also, we're going to have everything that you need on shelf, or we're going to get it for you.
Have you heard anything back, the ARPA, the county ARPA funds?
No, we haven't. I'm holding out for it. I have been talking to our friends of the library in addition, and then I talked to Jennifer, who is our Director of Library Operations, to start exploring additional options with funding, just in case we don't get the ARPA grant. I know there's a lot of people that applied for them. So I want to make sure that it's something that you guys won't be stuck with. I think we can figure out how to get it funded.
It's good to have options, and it's good you're still in the running.
Yes, and you've been a big help with navigating how we can navigate all these different conversations. So I appreciate that.
Great job. Keep it up.
Yeah, thank you. This is our first, first part of public comments. This is the time to comment or ask questions on anything on tonight's agenda. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for our record-keeping, and limit your comments to three minutes as much as possible. Mr. Brown, welcome.
Rick Brown, a member, a member, lived in Cascade for thirty-six years. I wasn't planning on commenting about this, but a niece of mine just opened a new library in Birmingham. They serve coffee, good coffee. I don't, and I apologize for not even asking the question. I asked a few people. They didn't know the answer. But a visit, perhaps, to that library by the staff here or any of you might be really beneficial. It's a brand-new library. It took years to solicit the funds and on and on and on, not asking for a new library, but just visiting perhaps a couple libraries like that new one because they're really big on kids. That question really hit me about children. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
If any of our Zoom participants would like to participate in this public comment section about things that are on the agenda, please raise your hand. If you are participating by phone, please dial star nine, and we'll wait just a moment. Supervisor. No one.
Okay. Is there a motion or discussion for approval of the consent agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no financial actions or unfinished business this evening. So next will be new business, item zero eight zero twenty twenty-two. And then the next item, zero eight one twenty twenty-two. Kind of go together. So how about we hear from staff, and then we'd love to hear from the business owners. And this is the establishment of a plant rehabilitation district or a rehabilitation facility for the business located at thirty-four ninety-eight Craft Avenue. Packaging Compliance Real Estate. Welcome.
Thank you. So Packaging Compliance Real Estate has applied for the establishments of a plant rehab district to be located at thirty-four ninety-eight Craft Avenue. That's on the corner of Craft Avenue and Eagle Drive. And the project is for the rehab of approximately twenty-six thousand square feet of an existing industrial building. So the state of Michigan, state of Michigan does provide tax incentives to manufacturers to enable renovations, expansion of aging facilities, assist in the building of new facilities. And this is done through the Plant Rehab and Industrial Development Districts Act. And so Packaging Compliance Labs, or P C L, is a medical device packaging, engineering, testing, and contract manufacturer located in Kentwood. They're experiencing growth, and they would like to expand their footprint to allow for future hiring, new technologies, and then they would also like to establish a formal headquarters. And so this bid, building renovation will allow for that, and will allow for the company headquarters. It will allow for new research and development laboratories, new engineering space, update their warehouse and shop space, and then provide offices for employees as well. This district and certificate only includes real property. Personal property is not included because they are exempt under the eligible manufacturing personal property tax. Currently, P C L has approximately forty employees at their Kentwood location, and they will be adding employees at their Cascade location when they open. The amount of the tax exemption request for this property is one point five million, just over one point five million. Again, that's all real property, no personal property included in that. The industrial facilities certificate, it does have to be issued during the early construction phases of the project, and it does entitle the company to certain tax savings throughout the time period for the exemption certificates. And there is in your packet, there is a table with some comps on it. And that does reflect the savings that the company will realize their first year after completion of the project. And so the values of the existing building in the land improvements are transferred to the certificate. They're frozen for the length of the abatement. And then that increase in value due to the modification will be reflected after the certificate expires. So again, as I mentioned on the charts that Assessor Genter put together for us, there's two comps. One is for a plant rehab district, which is what they've applied for. The other is for industrial development district. And Jennifer put together both comparisons so that the board could see the difference between the two districts. Based on the calculation, P C L will experience a savings of approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars annually. Just really quick, the difference between a plant rehab district and industrial development district is the plant rehab is designed for rehab projects. It does require a finding that fifty percent or more of the industrial property within that district is obsolete. The industrial development district is primarily for new facilities. So the president of the company is here tonight, Matt Langham. He is welcome to answer questions that he may have or that you may have. And obviously, Assessor Genter is here as well if you have any questions, so.
Sandra, I have a question for you. Does the exemption start at construction or completion of construction for twelve years?
I believe it's at completion of construction. Uh, I believe it's at completion of construction. Is that correct?
Um, it is approved today. The exemption would start next year. Frozen for twenty twenty three.
Yep, thank you.
The value would be frozen beginning with the twenty twenty three tax year and, um, then the 12 year starts from there. So it would be expired 12 years after. So it begins immediately.
So it covers a construction period then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sandra, I got a question too. Is a building currently vacant? And who was in there before? Do you recall?
Manaco, uh, Blue was in there before, Paul Mitchell. They were, um, product salon, product.
Okay, I probably never used their product. Thanks.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Um, I'm Matt Latham. I'm the president and co-founder of Packaging Compliance Labs. I'm excited to be here today. I'm excited about, uh, and our company investing in Cascade Township. We, uh, we founded the company, my partner and I, who's, uh, based from West Michigan or grew up in Kentwood. Founded the company in 2014 and so we are a medical device, uh, packaging company, primarily an engineering firm. So we work with companies to help deliver safe and effective products out to the market. So if you think of hip replacements, uh, cardiology type devices, uh, we work with those folks to design, uh, as well as test and then contract package those, those, uh, those devices. So currently we, we employ roughly forty employees, um, starting from just, uh, two, two buddies and, uh, in our, in our, our office or, or home office. So I'm really excited about, uh, the continued growth. Setting up a, a great place for not only our employees to, to set up and, and do the work that they, that they love to do. But we also do host many of the largest, uh, medical device companies to the area. So Oliver Healthcare Packaging is one of our, um, one of our suppliers or partners. Uh, we work closely with them. So it's very common for some, uh, folks to come on site to actually work with our, work with our team and be able to bring people to, uh, to the Grand Rapids area as well. So that's a little background about the company. I'd love to answer any questions. Um, I also have Eric Icard here from the right place. Um, we, uh, we actually, uh, Eric reminded me that we met back in July of 2014. So we started downtown Grand Rapids. We then moved to Kentwood, um, where we now have expanded four times in the current building and just ran out of space. So we're really excited about this next, uh, next chapter of the company.
Trustee Shipley?
First of all, welcome to Cascade. We take a lot of pleasure and pride in having good corporations that are good residents as much as what we want to be a good supporter of you guys too. So, um, as an aging American that may require some of your good packaging techniques in the future, I trust you'll keep that in mind.
So you don't make the hip joint? You just put it in a package?
Correct. So, so yeah, we would, um, design that, that packaging system that would be manufactured generally outside of the area. We do some light contract packaging, but it's mainly, mainly for startup companies or companies that are working through like an FDA submission of, of some sort.
Keeping the little bugs away from those devices is very important as far as I'm concerned. Will this building allow you to grow for a number of years?
It, it will. Um, so the, uh, so the total, uh, building size is, uh, thirty five thousand square feet. Roughly half of that is, is office area. Um, so there's a very large area upstairs to be able to host trainings for the, for the industry. Set up rapid prototyping type capabilities. So a lot of the things that we have to go outside of the, of the region to be able to leverage, um, to be able to bring more of those, those activities, um, into, into Grand Rapids. So this is a long-term, this is the, the long-term spot.
Do you have any questions for us or anything while you're here that, from the township? Other than tonight's approval?
I've, I've been very inquisitive with, uh, with Sandra over the last, uh, last six months. So I feel like I've, I've got a good, good handle. If there's, uh, any, any thoughts there.
No questions on my end. I, I, um, Eric Icard, I'm Senior Director of Business Development with the Right Place. And I've been working with Matt, uh, our introduction was July first in twenty fourteen. And it was actually his business partner that I met for coffee at Big B and McKay Tower in downtown Grand Rapids. And he described what he had planned and what he and Matt were working on. And he had some space at GVSU at the time to kind of get things started. Fast forward one year, Matt had his own facility in Kentwood. They had one, uh, chamber, uh, some testing equipment. Couple chairs, but not enough to host the Medical Device Council that they just joined, which I happen to run at the, for the right place. We hosted about twenty people that day, uh, took them, took us through their vision, what they had planned for the, for the space, what they had planned, uh, for clients, where they saw the future. Um, it was, it was great to see, you know, that, that all this time now here they're sitting at forty people and now they're about to acquire their first building. They, they lease in, in Kentwood and I've seen them expand multiple times and here they're going to buy their first building. As Matt said, it's a, a long-term investment. We're certainly excited about it, uh, for the regional medical device community. We're excited about it from the right place, uh, perspective and, uh, we appreciate your consideration today and, uh, certainly support the project.
Thank you. We appreciate the partnership with the right place and this is a perfect example of, um, the township's investment in, in your organization paying off.
Thank you.
Thank you for selecting Cascade, trustee McDonald.
Matt, I was wondering, a lot of companies have had a real challenge finding employees. Has that been a challenge for you the last couple of years as well?
Uh, it's been, it's been challenging. Uh, we've, we've been a little bit creative, I would say in, in how, um, how we're hiring. So, uh, most of our, of our folks are, are young professionals. Um, so we've worked closely with Grand Valley State University. So a, a primary entry level, uh, role for, for PCL would be a, a lab technician. So they're primarily, um, a recent college grad usually in the sciences. And, uh, and so we have a really strong training program that we'll run those folks through is over a six month, six month period. So that's, uh, that's been a, a, an area that we've invested heavily, um, as well as with internships with Michigan State University.
Western and Michigan both have, Michigan State have packaging.
Michigan State is, is the, uh, packaging place. Uh, don't tell a person that, but, uh, but yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's been a, a really fun, uh, fun time, uh, working through, um, the development of, of our, of our team members. We do, uh, really focus on cultural, uh, and having, having fun in the, in the workplace. Uh, we celebrate, celebrate the wins and, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's been a fun, fun ride so far.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, is there a motion to open public hearing?
Make a motion.
Support.
Motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to open a public hearing on this agenda item. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in public hearing. So now's the opportunity for any members of the public comment, questions. It's usually quiet, but it's formality. Anyone online?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to take part in this public hearing, please raise your hand. And again, if you're participating via phone, please hit diet, please dial star nine.
Hey, is there a motion?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel to close the public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Section B, consideration of the resolution to approve the plant rehabilitation district for this company.
I move to approve the resolution to approve the plant real, real rehabilitation district or PC real estate.
And Shipley supports.
That's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the resolution approving the plant rehabilitation district for Packaging Compliance Real Estate LLC. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Treasure Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yay.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesprins.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Item zero eight one twenty twenty two. Issuance of an IFT rehab certificate for Packaging Compliance Real Estate LLC. Is there a motion to open public hearing?
Shipley makes motion to open public hearing for the issuance of the certificate. Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel to open a public hearing on the issuance of the RF, or excuse me, of the rehab certificate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in public session or public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this agenda item? Is there a motion? To close public hearing?
Motion made to close a public hearing.
Support.
Motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to close the public hearing on the issue, issuance of the IFT rehab certificate. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Zero eight one twenty twenty two, part B. Consideration of the resolution approving the issuance of this IR IFT rehab certificate.
Shipley makes motion to approve the issuance of the IFT. Certificate.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to approve the issuance of IFT rehab certificate for Packaging Compliance Real Estate LLC. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley?
Yay.
Treasure Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesprins.
Yes, motion carried. Welcome and thank you. Next item zero eight two twenty twenty two. A resolution to adopt the Pathways Committee bylaws. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So in May of two thousand twenty two, the board established by resolution a pathways committee, uh, which should provide advisory information and recommendations to the township board, similar to the current function of the Parks Committee, which was established by the township in the late nineteen seventies. So the stated purpose of the committee is to provide research and recommendations to the township board regarding all aspects of the pathway system, including funding, regulations, maintenance and potential expansion. So the pathway committee began meeting this fall and its first order of business, uh, drafted was draft bylaws to assist the orderly conduct of business of the group. So the proposed bylaws are based on the Parks Committee bylaws, uh, which were recently amended and approved by the township board. Uh, so in your packet, I included the proposed resolution to adopt the bylaws and rules of procedure for the Cascade Chatter Pathway Committee. In addition to the resolution, also the actual proposed, uh, bylaws and rules of procedure. And then a copy of the resolution that was approved earlier this year, establishing the pathway committee. So given that the pathway committee was established as a permanent committee of the township, it's important for them to have established bylaws and rules of procedure to assist them in conducting the business of the committee. And as the purpose of the committee was similar in scope to the purpose of the Parks Committee, obviously with a focus on pathways rather than parks, made sense to utilize the Parks Committee existing bylaws as a source document. Really the only substantial difference between the two is the structure of the committee, uh, which was previously established in the creation resolution. So there's not any direct costs in approving the pathway committee bylaws or rules of procedure. And of course, any recommendations that involve financial considerations, uh, would be considered for approval by the township board at the time those recommendations are made. Being the dedicated committee that they are, I think six of the seven members are here tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. You can certainly ask it of the members as well.
Trustee Shipley?
As normal, I have questions of the audience. Pathway Committee, are you happy with the bylaws? Are they going to do what you want to do with them? Game without tying your hands. I don't want to hear any crying and weeping a month from now.
Well, we want their hands tied a little bit.
No, we don't. It's hard to ride a bike or walk down paths with your hands behind. That's all I have to ask.
We have a fantastic group of residents who've really put in a lot of time and been a huge help. Matter of fact, I don't think we need you guys in a couple of months. You're gonna finish up your tasks.
As long as they're happy with the bylaws, I'll make a motion to prove and I will support.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the resolution adopting the pathway committee bylaws as written. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Treasure Pierce? Trustee Shipley?
Yay.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesprins.
Yes, motion carried. Zero eight three twenty twenty two. Consideration of the twenty twenty three pathway maintenance program. Planning Commissioner Scott Rizzi, who also serves on this pathway committee, can introduce it and give a background and then introduce a new township employee.
Boy. Putting a lot of weight on my shoulders.
I know. That's why it's hard to turn that over, but.
My name is Scott Rizzi. I'm a member of the new pathway committee, uh, which has hit the path running, literally. So we've, uh, we've met a couple of times. Uh, thank you for approving our bylaws so we can officially, uh, move forward and, um, our, our group has decided to focus primarily on maintenance and safety for right now because, uh, we feel that we've been lacking in that category a little bit as a township. And so the goal is to, to focus on the maintenance. And then the theme of the pathways years ago was, uh, Ca- Cascade connects or connecting Cascades, something like that, if I remember right. And so, um, the goal is that once we're caught up on the maintenance side and we've got a good firm plan in place for that, then we'll start to focus on, on the expansion, uh, possibilities to connect more to more neighborhoods. As you know, the township strategic plan that has been talked about a lot lately, in that the residents of this community overwhelmingly seemed to, uh, want to see the pathways continue and to be well maintained. That was certainly mentioned in that plan. So we have that in mind as well. Um, the pathways develop community and they obviously, they also help to maintain home values, uh, keeping the community great. Our new township engineer, Eric Thorne, has, uh, done an assessment on the pathways. It's the first real comprehensive assessment we've ever had as a township. Uh, he did a fantastic job. He cataloged the, the whole, the whole system and, uh, and graded each sec, each section. And at our pathway meeting, nobody on the committee had any objections to, uh, to his, uh, to his results. So we're off to a good start so far. As you know, the Cascade Road Trail is the oldest segment of our system. Some neighboring communities built paths after we built that, that section and, uh, they've sent since torn up and replaced their sections of path. Uh, you could look at that from two angles. You could say, uh, we're behind on our maintenance or you could say we got a really good value when we put ours in. But, uh, needless to say, um, we feel that, uh, we need to come up with a plan to, to move ahead with an aggressive strategy to maintain our, our paths. And, uh, I'll let Eric touch on the details of, uh, of what he did. Uh, I don't want to talk about that. One of the advantages I do have though of, of speaking tonight is that I can go a little bit off script and, uh, and dive into a, a more of a personal thought on this, uh, not necessarily from the committee. But, uh, I know the township for a number of years has had an aggressive program of, um, funding local road repaving through the Kent County Road Commission. And I know it's a really good value for the township because they match. But I also know that our local roads are, um, in pretty good shape now because of that robust program. And so I just was going to throw out the idea in the air that maybe we dial down some of the funding to that program and maybe shift some of it into the pathways for a few years to try to get our, our, our summer pathways, uh, back up to snuff. So with that, I'll, uh, I'll see you later and let you, uh, see if Eric has any comments to make about his report or, uh, go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Eric. This is the first time you've met the board, but we've anticipated your arrival for quite some time.
Yes, it is. It's very nice to meet everybody. Um, I am the new township engineer. Uh, my name's Eric Thorne for anybody who hasn't met me. Um, I'm already very humbled to, um, thank you for kind words about the work that I've Thank you for kind words about the work that I've done. One of the first things I did. Um, as township engineer here is this, um, kind of an assessment and kind of a start of an asset management plan for pathways. Um, all I've heard since I've gotten here is how important pathways are to the township and. Having walked the seventeen plus miles of them, how kind of in rough shape they are. Um, so what, the goal of what I did with this plan was to pretty much. Segmentize the whole network. So there's five major segments, you know, that Spalding Burton, uh. Thornhill Center segment, the Butrick Avenue segment. So I, I wanted to break those down into smaller segments, and so. What my assessment plan did was it broke down kind of block for block, each of these segments kind of by crossroad, by material. Whether they're made of concrete or asphalt. Um, or if they're, well, wide they are, um. Basically breaking down into smaller light components and then rating those components based on a one to ten scale. So I used what basically amounted to a, a modified Pazer scale. Pazer is the, uh, road rating skill that the state of Michigan uses to rate all their roads. Ten being perfect, one being very bad. And so I went through and walked the network, like I said, and I provided a rating for each of those segments. Or each of those components inside those segments. And, uh, basically I created a, a G I S database that can generate what's in your, uh, packets. It's a color coded map. That provides, um, pretty much an easy to read. Um, what condition is each segment in the city or in the township rated at? What, what, what condition is it in? Um. And so, um, from that point forward, I, I took each of that information, what they're each rated, and I said. Um, well, what's it cost to treat a segment that's in, you know, the condition of a five? What's it cost if it's in the condition of a four, of a three, of a two? Um, so I started to assign cost, uh, uh, treatments to those components. And then, um, from that point forward, tried to group together, uh, components inside the system that could be, uh. Put, put out for bid together, um, so that they're, they're either they're in light condition. Or they're together, they kind of all equal the same cost. Basically. The point of it being is the start of an asset management plan. It was the start of something that. You know, you can look at and say, without thinking, we wanna do this group of, of pathways together and then this group and then this group and then this group. And eventually what it should turn into is less of a, we have to redo all, you know, this group and this group and this group and more of a, okay. Um, let's apply this treatment method in three years to this one when it needs it, and then. We'll know down the road, we'll need to apply this treatment method to this, and so basically what it's doing is the start of. We, we're going from not knowing anything about the network to knowing the condition of everywhere in the network and what needs to be done where at what time. Um, the good news about the position we're in now is you can pretty much start anywhere. But.
That's a positive way to put it. After we look at what we've spent over the last, but we're happier here.
True, true, but, um, but I can confidently say with this system in place, the G I S database that I can. We, it's, it's a living document that when you do work, you do maintenance, you do rebuild, whatever you're doing, it gets updated. It gets reprinted and then the next year comes or the next, you know, you can create your maintenance schedule. And you can do it with confidence, knowing that what the work we're doing this year with the money that's set aside for this is, it's, it's being targeted to the right spot. And that for work in years to come will be targeted in the right spot. And that's the summation basically of what I've done is, um, just setting up, setting the groundwork for creating an asset management point. For the pathways.
Question time?
Mm-hmm.
Eric, first of all, welcome to Cascade Township, or condolences, however you may see it in the future. Um. Pathways, you're right, they are the number one, along with parks that the residents like, and. I, when we get to that point, I would leave it to the committee to determine which ones are done first. But I will cannot stress enough the importance of building these cotton picking things properly. I have some grave reservations in the back of my mind after seeing them built over the past several years. That maybe some shortcuts were taken.
Did you get that vibe or I've heard that, but do you have any opinions on, because of big sections are new? But then we'd also gotten some complaints about some of those newer sections already collecting water and different problems. I don't, I'm just curious, is that just grumpy residents that? Or is there? Did you see some newer pathways that maybe?
Your construction quality will vary based on contractor and based on the standard that you hold them to.
So what did you witness as far as the newer passing?
Newer pathways I thought looked good. Although if it was paved in the last two or three years, it, it should look good. Um. I didn't notice new pathways looking like they were falling apart. Something I might notice though is in older pathways, sometimes you can tell. You know, a pathway that was built well, even if it's old, it will look cracked up. You'll tell that it's old, but. You know, it's something that you could maybe mill off half of and pave back. Some are very warped. You can tell there's an issue with the base. It doesn't drain well. Um, those are ones that maybe, you know, the, they didn't use this, they didn't use a good base. They didn't compact it properly. Um, they didn't maybe achieve positive drainage off of the pathway, so those type of, they do exist in the pathway network. Um, recent construction, I didn't notice there wasn't something that really stood out to me as being improperly done.
One of the ongoing things that I've noticed with pathways out here, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong here. But another value that we like out here in Cascade are our trees.
Mm-hmm.
Guess what tree roots do to that thin asphalt over a period of time? So what may have been good five, seven years ago, today is cracked. And those are the type of things that we've got to make sure that when we put back in place are properly built to last as long as possible. Without cutting down the cotton picking tree.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I make a very good point, um, ahead of construction. Of highlighting locations that have issues particularly with trees. Um, because one of a couple of things we can do to help mitigate those issues in the future. Uh, the first and foremost is the obvious, and that's digging down into the subgrade and getting rid of tree roots that are infringing in the pathway. A second of, uh, it's where you have trees, you can build more base usually. It's the nice thing of the pathway is you're less constricted with the grade than you are necessarily with the road. Um, so if you have to build base over areas with tree roots, you can do that, and then in the future, hope that. You're more likely to not have those issues recur.
Did, did we not already also approve a, uh, new pathway along Cascade Road on the north side? Going to subdivisions from thirty six street.
Yes, instead of, and that was, um, where's? Mr. Rizzi's idea, instead of that median in the middle of Cascade Road. Safer to just connect was at Ken Robb, all the way down to thirty six.
The two subdivisions up there and bring them down to thirty six street. That, that's still the plan, is it not?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so that was part of the Cascade widening project that. Two thousand twenty three, and Eric and I just today, um, have set up a meeting with the road commission in early November. To get Eric circled in to that project, so he knows what's going on.
Perfect, good.
There's another rock in your backpack. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee McDonald.
Eric, and this, this also goes to the, to the committee, because. We're really happy to have you, but my, my concern is number, your, your, your second. Uh, in identifying the network, number two is the, the Larraway Lake Loop. Uh, Scott brought up the, the importance of safety. And that's, that loop there is our most dangerous section of our pathway in the township, because we force residents to go into the street. So from Cascade Road up to Tamron, you can only walk in the street. And, and of course, that gets a lot of rubble, a lot of dirt. In the winter, it's covered with snow. But I mean, I ran down there today, I could pull my arm out and cars go by me at forty, forty-five miles an hour. And about a year and a half ago, we had the Kent County Road Commission do a survey to show what the right of way is. And we'd actually started talking, engaging with some of the neighbors along there with the seven, eight homes, talk about moving the pathway. Having a, an isolated pathway there like the rest of our path, rather than put people in the road. So I, I don't wanna belabor tonight talking about that Larraway Lake section. But I think it's a really important section, and if we can, if we can. Get it out of the roadway, so we don't have kids and people, you know, it, being forced onto the road. That would be a really, I think, big priority, especially from a safety standpoint.
And connectivity, yep.
Yeah. Because we've got a lot of people up on Tamron coming that way, and they wanna get down to Cascade Road, so they have to walk in the street. And that's in, in, in the road commission have put symbols, uh, off, outside the painted lines. That said, this is the pathway, but people still have to walk there and, and, and cars can fly up the hill at forty miles an hour and they're on their cell phones. And they cut that line all the time. I mean, I've, I've had to step back. Um, so that's just one. I think that Larraway Lake Loop is something that needs some attention, at least to see if we can. Maybe get the homeowners, uh, as we've, we've talked to some of them last year about. How we get a right of way to, to expand the path. And the road commission, by the way, had come up with a plan to help us shift the entire road at the top. A little bit to the west, so we could widen that out as well. So we've got some, we had some traction there.
Okay.
So that'll be a fun one for you to.
Add fuel to the fire. I think that road was, I could be wrong, but I think it was chip sealed or something too, which.
Well, they just rebuilt it.
Did they rebuild it? Yeah, well, maybe they didn't.
But they're willing, but I, I remember driving through there and thinking, I don't wanna walk on here. Well, but you have, because there's no pathway.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's part of our, part of our trail system, but we force residents into the road.
Yeah.
So I can give some more background too, because we, we talked to some of the neighbors about giving us some right of way, so at the top of the hill, we didn't actually have to. Make it go right next to the road.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm.
I understand exactly where you're.
The pedestrian crossing, pedestrian bicycle crossing over the Thornapple River. Super high priority, super in demand by residents, not on the agenda tonight. Please explain.
Yeah, so the pathway committee did make a recommendation. I guess I'll back up a minute, so, uh, I don't know. Can't remember if we talked about the last meeting or not, but we got turned down for Kent County ARPA funds for that project. Um, they were, um, they reviewed the project not on its merits, on its eligibility. Um, and because, um, Kent County got so much money, they have a lot more restriction on their funds than we do. And for the infrastructure category, it had to benefit a population that was disproportionately affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And they couldn't make that connection, so, uh, they didn't judge it on its merits, they judged it on its eligibility. And so the ARPA funding was off, was off the table. Uh, the pathway committee did meet, uh, and talk about the merits of the project. Uh, they like it a lot. Um. If you recall, the project is essentially taking the existing bridge structure, so you don't have to make any changes to the bridge. Uh, basically, uh, milling down the existing raised sidewalks on each side. Um, and then, uh, creating a separated pathway on each side of the bridge, so there'd be travel lane. It'd be a barrier, there'd be pedestrian lane, and then of course, there's a barrier on the outside. Uh, the pathway committee recommended that the township board consider that project for two thousand twenty three. On the north side, on the Berburg side of, of the project. However, talking to, uh, Sandra and Grace, uh, the D D A also has interest in that project, uh, because that provides, um. That's a way for people to get into the D D A, uh, so we made a decision that we're gonna go talk to the D D A about it at their meeting next week. And then we'll put that on the agenda for the township board to consider it their second meeting.
Great.
Good job, Ben.
Great work. This was the number one complaint, I would say, as a new supervisor, and then in the. One month of the pathway committee and the new in-house engineer, it's a huge help. Really appreciate it. Eric's gonna be working on PFAS restoration also, that whole big neighborhood back there that. Restoration usually gets, takes a backseat to everything else. And it won't be taking a backseat, because our township engineer is gonna be an aggressive little.
Driver's seat.
Huh?
It's gonna be in the driver's seat.
Literally, it's gonna, the only bad thing is we have to wait for the pipes to go in, other than that.
Yeah.
You may, you may find that to be more than a rock in your backpack. It's more like a boulder. Okay?
We got some special tools.
I'm gonna get strong.
So you're looking for approval, um. Or pathway maintenance considering group one, two, three, or group one, two, eight, nine, correct?
Correct.
And those are just estimates. Now, we don't know for sure what that's gonna cost. Do we get a bid out? Right?
Correct.
Well, that's, you say for budgeting purposes?
Well, tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, we're looking to. Approve the program to get further analysis of the recommendation sections to use in development of bid documents, correct?
Yeah, that's exactly it, because the, because the dollar amount was so high, I wanted to give the board just the opportunity to. Um, you know, kind of kick off that direction first. Uh, I'll be honest, I think. Uh, Eric's been cheating a little bit at my direction. He's already been out there kind of doing the secondary. Uh, look to be able to start putting together those bid documents. Um, but this is something that we need to get going in pretty quick fashion, uh, because of the capacity issues in the industry, so. Um, with the blessing of the township board, Eric will move full force getting the bid documents together. We'll get a bid out. It'll go back to the pathway committee first, and then a recommendation will come to the township board, either at the December meeting or early January.
Okay, then with that, I make a motion to move forward. With the program to get further analysis of the recommended sections to use in the development of the bid documents, thus. Approving the pathway repair and maintenance program to move forward.
Shipley strongly supports.
So motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley. To approve the proposed twenty twenty three pathway maintenance program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Half of our crowd now, and then. Zero eight four, twenty twenty two. Consideration of a name for the property at twenty nine seventy seven Y Cliff Drive. Commonly known as the Church on the Hill property. And we have Ms. Jenny Wani from our Parks Committee, who is the chair. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi. Um. You, you read, hopefully saw the memo and had a chance to read it. We've been working for a couple of months. Um, we've run things through the Unity Spiritual Church. They had their first service a couple Sundays ago and had about forty people. So they were very thrilled. Um, we worked with the Cascade Historical Society. Jan Shekel, am I saying that right? And Joanne King, and then. I was following up on some White's family history today and ended up calling Roger White's granddaughter in. Chesterton, Indiana today. To say, how do you think the family would feel if we called the property, uh, Y Cliff Trailhead Park? And I learned from her, she's in her nineties. She would love to make a donation, and I said, we weren't quite there yet, but it's really lovely that she was so supportive. But she told me her grandfather. Created the name Y Cliff out of, uh, the Reformation, which I don't know if any of you are biblical scholars and. Yeah, I was kind of like, I don't know real, I kind of know the Reformation, but that's about it. But I will do a little more research to find out, so. We looked at the historical society information, uh, the White's were the third family that bought that property. But they probably had the most lasting. Impact, um, on the property, and I could go into, I have pages of their family history and. Now, according to the two lovely ladies at the historical side, I need to check out the book. Cascade Chronicles that the township has and do more reading. But anyway, the Parks, uh, Committee, uh, recommended unanimous vote that we call the property. Y Cliff Trailhead Park, which supports, reflects the history of the family that owned the property. And then specifically describes the location and what the purpose is. So we're here today to hope to get your approval on that. Y Cliff.
Trustee Shipley?
I wasn't aware of the, the history of the White, Y Cliff family. Um. In the past, I've, uh. I thought it might be appropriate to name that park after the Claude and. Uh, Marion Robinson, who put in a lot of time here in the township on various committees and whatnot. And they live up in that neck of the woods as well, but, uh, I'm open to either one.
Do you know, did the White's put in that stone fence along the property?
Oh, I was gonna ask her that, and I didn't do that, but I have her phone number now, so. And I, she also gave me her address, so I can start writing to her. I'm assuming so, and then the church is putting in a rose garden. Uh, next to the parking lot, and that's going in the labyrinth that the White's family had built in there, so they're. Kind of bricks in a pattern, and they're gonna plant roses in that area, so that's really neat. And then the other thing I should mention, we also worked out with the church, and that's in the memo. We have a little easement. So we're able to go from the parking lot to our property through theirs. Um, without feeling like we're trespassing, which I'm very excited about.
So the trailhead that allows the wooded section, because it's not that large, to stay. Wooded or undeveloped, and then the township shares the parking lot with the church.
Yes, and then the next item on the agenda is the Parks Master Plan, and Mike has some, um. Drawings to show, uh, propose what we'd like to actually have the Trailhead Park, what we could include as amenities and what it might look like.
Jenny, did you get a recorded easement from the church?
So we're in the process of getting the survey crew out. We need to have it surveyed first in order to actually. Okay, but yes, that's the plan is once that survey is done, it'll actually, we'll amend their agreement to include that easement.
Okay, that's good, because we had a situation. On property our neighborhood association owns, and we gave an informal easement, and it wasn't worth anything. To the property. So I just want to be sure it's recorded that we have it in writing, and it stays with us.
And we're having a tinge of an issue with the homeowner that's, I call it the old parsonage. The house that's kind of on thirtieth and what he's kind of take, it's a delightful man, but. We just want to check out the boundaries, because it feels like he's got a little of our property that he's mowing. And so, once we get this survey, we'll get it all figured out, and we'll put stakes in the ground, and we'll know.
John Whitecliff was one of the early Protestant reformers in thirteen seventy-eight, when they. Rebelled against Catholic church and the Protestant Reformation began. Goes back to the fourteenth century, so.
Wow, that's probably, wow. And then.
Earlier, two hundred years.
And then one of the White's relatives was the Attorney General of Michigan for a period of time. There you go. I learned today. But don't ask me what year. Because I couldn't tell.
Given that history, it seems appropriate to call it the Y Cliff Trailhead Park and, and make motion that we approve that.
A second. It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by clerk Slater. To name twenty-nine seventy-seven Y Cliff Drive officially the Y Cliff Trailhead Park. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And thanks for all the behind the scenes homework you did. On a related topic, next zero eight five twenty twenty-two. And this was, the agenda was put together before the Parks Committee met yesterday. So. This isn't so much of, about the thirty day public comment period, more of an update to the board on the status of it. And we have Mr. Mike Reese, who's a member of the Parks Committee, but then after proper disclosure, he is also. The Director of the Landscape Architecture and Planning Team at the Troyer Group, who is formally. Putting together the Parks Rec and Open Spac- Space Plan. So. With that, Mr. Reese, you want to come up and? Get some credit for all the hard work you've been doing?
Great, thank you. So as was mentioned, we met yesterday morning. To kind of look at the plan, some of the members didn't have a chance to go through the whole thing. So we're meeting. A meeting with representative or two Friday morning to go over the plan a little further. And then we will, at the next board meeting, want to have that recommendation to open the public. Review period for thirty days. The schedule I had talked about with Brian Hillbrands was. Pretty tight with the board meeting dates. So this will get a little more time for the review and revisions if there's necessary after the public. Comment period. So the goal would be. To have that public review period after the next board meeting on the twenty-sixth. Then in November, we'd schedule a public open house, and this would allow for. You know, we'll have the online review period, but then this will be an in-person chance as well for people to see the plan. And also included at that open house would be the Y Cliff Concepts, preliminary concepts for the design and improvements at the. Y Cliff Trailhead Park. So then with that, we would make any revisions from the public comment period. And then at the, I think it's the December fourteenth meeting, would be when we'd have the final public hearing. And adoption from the board for the plan, which has to be submitted by February first to DNR. And that would make the township eligible for DNR grants for the parks to make improvements over the next five years. So that's just kind of a update on the schedule, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you give us a real basic explanation of what the Parks and Rec plan is for those who might think it's just like the strategic plan or?
Yep, so this is a five-year master plan, be twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven. To provide guidance to the Parks Committee and Township on improvements to the parks. Over the next five years, but it also makes the township eligible for the DNR grants. That if you don't have an active five-year plan, you would not be eligible. So. It's kind of a, you know, two birds with one stone, being able to create that plan, but also then make the township eligible for funding.
Are we eligible right now based on our?
No, that, I think that was two thousand fourteen was created, so that plan has expired.
So for three years now, we haven't had.
Correct. So part of that plan will be to identify potential projects that would work well. Within that grant scoring criteria and system, to hopefully be able to get one of those grants in the next five years. Especially looking at the rec park.
Any comments or questions?
So you're really not looking for anything from us tonight, then?
No, it'd be the, yeah, next meeting that we want, want the approval to open up that thirty day. Public comment period, and I would have to have the necessary advertisements ahead of time, so the public's aware of that. Where of that period. So just wanting to provide an update at this point.
Thank you. It's worth mentioning, was it last week, there was a Kent County. Trail Summit, all the different municipalities, most municipalities from around the county got together downtown. And it was really, really interesting to hear about. What Ada Kentwood, other places are all doing in pathways and trails and parks, super important, and there's a lot going on. A lot going on, and Cascade didn't do a presentation, but when Ada was presenting, it's interesting, they. They're doing a lot of construction, right? New pathways. And as the, to get the public input on that, there's, their manager mentioned that they had. A successful public comment period and, and feedback, and that was three hundred, approximately three hundred residents. That provided feedback and two strategic, or two open houses. So for ours. That was just done in the past year, we had almost two thousand, and we had four meetings. So it's just a really good foundation to get this. To actually be able to do things that.
We had, yeah, the strategic plan had a great response, and it was really helpful to have that strategic plan process kind of going alongside the. Parkmaster plan process to see all of the common themes between the two, and how important the parks and trails were to the overall goals of the township. So it was a, yeah, nine hundred and some responses just for the parks master plan. And of all the parks master plans we've done, I think that's probably the highest percentage I've seen as far as amount of responses per capita. So that was great to see. It is a great effort by the township to go to the extents to get the survey out there and seek those responses as well. So. It's really helpful in making recommendations that you know you're rooted in the public interest. So that was great to see.
Thank you for coming tonight to give us an update and keep us in the loop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items for discussion. Manager Swayze?
Yeah, so Supervisor Les Bruntz asked me to just give an update on an incident that we had at our dog park. So we did have a. What I'll qualify as a dog attack at the dog park in late September. Unfortunately, we've not been able to identify the dog or the owner at this time. The, basically, the, the victims left right away and didn't collect any information. So. We're continuing to, to try to figure out, you know, what went on there, so we can make sure that that particular animal isn't allowed back in the park. In the meantime, the staff in cooperation with Deputy Diappa have been putting together some. Some new things as well. We're going to redo the signage down there. The signage is, is pretty small. Kind of restate the, the rules, provide a little bit more guidance on making sure people do report incidents, so we can. Respond right away. We didn't get reported this incident until, I think it was on like a Thursday or Friday, and we didn't get to Monday. So at that point, it's hard to, hard to react. We do have a couple solid enabled cameras that the township has purchased. So we're talking about considering putting the park under surveillance for a while with, with Deputy Diappa's help. So we're, we're looking into that. And then we're just going to do an education campaign. It's been a while since we really talked about the dog park. So Hunter and Jessica. Are in Madison are working on putting together, I'm just off the feature in our. And on the website and social media, and then our paper newsletter for this one year. So. Just going to, you know, get that information back out there. We did, Jenny helped us reach out to a couple of contacts that she had. Dog parks that are ran in Ottawa County. You know, it's, it's a hard thing to do, right? You know, they're basically, their record said they've had similar incidents and. Absence of just paying somebody to be down there all the time. It's hard to, it needs to be a little bit more self-regulating. So we're using some of those secondary recommendations that they made, and they're going to.
Ben, are serving any update on our Eagle Creek? Concerns?
Do you want to give the update, or you want me to give the update?
I, Ben sent a letter after the last meeting to state rep and also state senator, right?
We did, yep.
And then I spoke with our state representative last week, and then also his staff member. Since they're at the state and Eagles at the state level. They communicated with Eagle. And they're waiting to hear back for a plan or substantive response from Eagle.
So I will say from Representative Albert's office in writing, they have said that. Eagle staff intend to send a letter in the form of a request for information to the property owner by the end of this month. So we have somebody that's committed to an actual deadline to do something.
Can you read that again, Ben? Just be.
Yep, so. Basically, I'll just read the whole thing. This is from Hannah DeMasse, who's a staffer in Representative Albert's office. So I spoke with Eagle, and they said that while there's not been direct communication yet, but staff are working on addressing complaints within this district. As you can imagine, it's time-consuming process, and staff intend to send a letter in the form of a request for information to the property owner by the end of this month. So I've got a tickler in my calendar. If we don't hear anything by November one, we'll figure out where, where they're at, but. At least we have somebody committing to some type of deadline.
We may be fortunate that we have a election coming up. Maybe they'll actually take some action.
He's turned out.
Turn, he's turned limited, so.
So I called him twice, didn't leave a voicemail, and he responded within thirty minutes. Wow. He was in his session, I actually texted him. He's super, super responsive. And then his staff called that exact same day. So they're on top of it. Next, we'll see if Eagle's on top of it. If Eagle wants to enforce their environmental laws, great. And if they don't, the township can evaluate. What steps we want to take. If we don't have the state's cooperation. But we're not quite there yet.
No wonder my light continues to be out above me.
The manager comments? Oh, public comments, I'm sorry. Any, any comments are welcome or questions on whether it's on tonight's agenda or not. But I'm thinking you may not have as much to say, because.
It's about something entirely different.
Oh, okay.
Brian Holcomb, thirty-four fifteen Glenstone Court. My question tonight is, what is the procedure to get the speed limit sign that blanks and tells people how fast they're going? Because the traffic between twenty-eight street and thirty-six has picked up tremendously. And I think it's a lot of cut-through traffic because of all the construction. People that live in the subdivisions, they pretty much. Okay, I go five over. That's no big deal, but people are going ten, fifteen. I mean, it's hard not to speed when you go down the hill. No matter which way, and on occasion, I've seen that speed limit sign, but is there a. Is that Kent County Road Commission? Do we request it? Because I think putting it up tells people, especially the people coming through, not realizing how fast they're going. They're going in excess of seventy miles an hour in a forty-five mile an hour zone. So. It's just something to put there so people can see it. Like I said, the people that live in the area, we know it. If we're speeding, shame on us, but other people. I know you're in a hurry to get to work, but they put it up. I'm not in favor of putting a sheriff there to give tickets, but every once in a while, I do see a sheriff and he pulls people over, and hey, that's the luck of the draw. So. You know, but that sign, and I've seen it around on Cascade Road before, but I'm just curious as to. Do we have to request it? What's the procedure to get that sign put where we really could use?
Couple different ways to get there, Ben.
Are you talking about Cascade Road between thirty-six and twenty-eight?
No, I'm talking about Thornhill.
Okay. Yep, so that is our sign.
Oh, we own it.
We own it. Yeah, so the road commission does. They're the ones that carry it around and put it up and, and do that. So. I have one spot on the list before that one, which is Cascade Road between thirty-six and twenty-eight street. When I'll contact Omar in the morning, let him know he needs to go on Thornhill's after that.
How long does it usually stay up? A week?
Usually stays up a week.
Okay. So that's a place between here and there that I think it needs to be put up. Get it out there. Thank you very much.
To just kind of coattail on Mr. Holcomb's comments here, not only the speed, but the volume of traffic. I don't know if you guys noticed, but our volume all of a sudden is just ballooned.
Did the expressway being closed down?
That might be part of it, like Mr. Holcomb said, I don't know.
It's huge. Yeah.
Give it to our civil engineer, let him find out.
Eric, what was your background before coming to Cascade?
Were you a cop?
I was not a cop, unfortunately, no. I worked for the city of Holland in a very similar capacity. So I, I'm very well versed in volume and speed limit. We'll call them complaints, but I understand them at the same time. I imagine a lot of what you're seeing now is because of construction. It's impossible to get anywhere without running into construction, so I can only imagine that. A lot of little municipalities, maybe like ourselves, are seeing more volume because of that. That's all I can really offer.
Thanks. There's no easy fix.
No. Winter, maybe construction will stop.
Any other public comments? Either virtually or in person? All right, we have one right here. Go ahead, Mr. Vance, I'll come up.
Hello, Scott Vance, Algonquin twenty-five seventy orange. Calling about the deer. I understand they, we are allowing hunting in. Is it Peace Park? Is that the one off of Grand River and Bolt?
Yes.
Okay, what about the one in Burton Park? Anything there or no?
We do not allow hunting in Burton Park right now, so.
Okay.
Always allowed hunting in Peace Park. The board just regulations at the last meeting. It's our study at Burton Park is completed, the board will start considering what our options are for Burton Park.
Okay, either having sharpshooters or something like that, you know, obviously with bows and everything, because, you know, bullets can travel quite a ways. I do have a question, though. For the people that do get the permits, is there any requirement from the township to report any kills? That are coming out of the parks?
Yeah, so that was a new regulation we put into the, this year, they do have to report, whether they kill or not, they're going to have to report. And if they don't report, they won't be eligible for a permit the next season.
Okay, excellent. Glad to hear that. And then piggybacking on Mr. Holcomb's. I know that the township has the, the little mini speed signs, but then the sheriff's department has the speed trailers. Are, is that something that we could also ask perhaps Deputy Diappa to, to get in, or just a little. Sign-mounted ones? I don't know which one Mr. Holcomb wanted specifically, but you know, that's a different option as well.
So we actually, besides the little signs, we actually own our own speed trailer now, and that's. Is reporting on that is better.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, for, you know, those will do also, obviously, speed, but also traffic accounts as well, from my prior experience. And glad to hear the pathways is moving forward with their thing. Just curious about the fence along by the Camelback Bridge. That's in kind of disrepair, you know, obviously due to its age and everything. Perhaps maybe the next time, if it does get replaced or repaired, instead of doing the split rail, maybe going with a vinyl. That's a little bit more permanent or less. Less chance of deterioration. Obviously, the wood does look nice, but obviously, they rot away and, and everything. So just my two cents. So just my two cents, I did see a trustee McDonald walking his dog there once, as well as jogging when the weather was obviously nicer. So I don't know if you noticed that some of the, some of the boards were falling and the posts were knocked down somewhat. You know, not horrible, but obviously, you know, it could, could be better. Perhaps that's a good spring project. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Article 12, manager comments.
I just have a couple of items. So at the last meeting, I had talked about the Fire Station One groundbreaking ceremony. We did have to push that back until November 2nd because of, we're still waiting for consumers. They've disconnected the power from the building. We actually need them to disconnect power from the site. They have to move that, the box in front of the, the building. So I understand from Triangle that consumers, that they're working on it. It's a complicated project. So we did move that groundbreaking back to November 2nd. And that was in your email today as well. I also wanted to let you know that unfortunately, KNR has indicated to us that they're not going to be starting the PFAS project this year, which was pretty disheartening because they had updated the schedule a couple of times saying that they were starting. So Eric and I have a meeting kind of with the project team this Friday to kind of figure out what that is. The good news is it doesn't push the ending date of the project back at all. There's a date that they have to be completed and they still indicated that they'll be more than able to meet that date. A little disappointed that they're not starting. I'm also not disappointed that we won't have a a half-open construction site in the middle of winter when nothing's going on. So kind of both sides. But it is a project bringing clean water to people and I would like to get it going as soon as possible. So once we're able to meet with the project team, we'll report back on what the issues are with that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Board comments?
Sure. Always stand up and thank you guys for coming to the meeting. Bring you next door neighbor next time. Let's fill up the seats. We got more chairs if we do fill the seats. And a little sideline on the PFAS water. Of course, we put off reconstructing those roads this year, waiting for that project. So I don't know what their end date is, Mr. Ben, but maybe, maybe the road commission can get on those roads if the project gets done on a timely basis, but I'm not holding my breath. Thank you.
After Eeyore's done with his comments, any, any other board comments?
Eeyore?
I just have two. The, in the consent agenda, the recommendations from the accounting firm for the forensic analysis. I'd like to see staff prepare for board approval, at least the top two that were the highest ranked as far as importance, so that we can begin to adopt those.
So the plan was for them to go to the Governance Committee on the 26th. And then there's a quick turnaround. There's a board meeting November 2nd, because there's only a week in between. Because we, the board meetings up. So if the board would rather they don't go to the Governance Committee, that's fine. I can just bring them straight to the board.
I don't think it's appropriate for the Governance Committee as the only subcommittee right now, under the, under our policy, as far as what each committee handles, I don't think the financial policies under the personal finance committee, which we don't have right now. We could have it the next meeting. I'll, can have the appointments ready, but I don't think it falls under the purview of the Governance Committee. In fact, I'm sure it doesn't. And I don't want the Governance Committee to be a catchall. Thoughts? Concerns?
It could come just to the board, I think. I think that's a good idea.
Lucky you. Opens your calendar right up, doesn't it?
Also, we've got just over two months before the fiscal year 2023 budget has to be approved and adopted by the board. So I would, I would like to see a just real basic time schedule, timeline for steps to adopt it. That includes dates and deadlines, just helps us all to be accountable so that we, nothing gets cut short. And we've got a lot of active committees and commissions, residents who have spent a lot of time and energy volunteering their time. And I just wanted that process to include input from the different committees and commissions, and as well as more than one township board workshop. So I just don't want the process to get truncated like it was last year.
And I tend to agree with you. We got a lot of pokers in the fire this year for the parks and the pathways and all that. And we need to make some hard decisions. And it might require more than just one meeting. And lack of better term, rubber stamp meetings. That's my opinion. And I'm, I'm willing to spend more time if needed.
Does that sound, do you, Ben, you will just come up with a timeline and then forces us to?
The schedule on the next board meeting as well.
Perfect. Great. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Triply makes motion for adjournment since the business of this meeting has been concluded.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley to adjourn, supported by trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Never get my way.
I'm sorry for calling you Eeyore. That was a little bit harsh. You're not Eeyore.
Eeyore is one of my favorites.
Mine too. That's why I did, yeah.